Good evening. It is Tuesday, March fifteenth, 2022. We are convened as the Provo City School District Board of Education. We are meeting at 280 West, 940 North in Provo, Utah. And we will begin with a roll call. Melanie Hall, Board President.
Rebecca Nielsen, Board Vice President.
Jennifer Parcher, Board Member.
Gina Hales, Board Member.
Kate Jensen, Board Member.
Terry McCabe, Board Member.
Derek Anderson, Business Administrator.
Keith Fratell, Superintendent.
Is there a motion to convene?
I believe that we convene study session.
Right, we are now in study session. We're gonna move to number five first, the policy review for Policy 1420. Board meeting via electronic communication, Policy 1420. Superintendent, do you want to take that?
Okay, so in a, in an agenda building activity that Melanie and Rebecca and I had, I guess, a few weeks ago, Melanie mentioned, where was the directive to go?
This is from JLC.
From JLC. That there was, there was a need for all districts throughout the state, all the LEAs throughout the state to, to update our policies to include remote school board meetings. And I guess we probably should have done that about two years ago, but we didn't. I don't, I think everybody was so busy reacting that we didn't think about changing that. So now I've made that change, and the change is, as we normally do, is a bold underline. And that was the extent. I didn't muck around with any other aspect of the policy other than just to include it on that.
Is there any comments or questions about changes we made on this?
I do. Should we actually stay YouTube? Or should we leave it as broadcasting? Because any year from now, we might be using something else.
That's fine with me.
I'm fine with that change.
Great suggestion.
No, something could be better.
What would we call it?
Streaming, streaming platform. Streaming platform.
And I'm glad that you, on line sixty-two, crossed out that whole paragraph. That, that's not really applicable anymore.
You know, that's, I struggled with that because I kept thinking, okay, so if we put this other thing in, what does that do to this paragraph? So that was the conclusion I drew as well.
Yeah, it doesn't apply anymore.
Any other suggestions or comments about this? All right, we will be taking a vote on this in the business meeting. All right, we're gonna go back to number four for the construction update.
Whoever makes the motion, excuse me, remember to mention what the changes.
All right, Mark, you're up.
Hi, everybody. As always, if you have any questions, not only just about these things, but anything, please let me know and I'm happy to help. Bonnie, you go first. These first couple of slides, you guys, were just some updates so you could see where how final programming, final design finished out for the new Shoreline Middle School. You can just see the main level and the second level, how the academic wings are laid out, science wings, auditoriums, the PE areas. Just, I don't know if I've, and I'll talk about another building soon in a minute that we've improved over the last ten years. But honestly, I think I'm probably happiest about this, this layout for this middle school. This is gonna be such a great facility for students and teachers for decades to come. It's just a, it's just a great, great program. And a lot of input from the principal, from his faculty, from directors, from a lot of people. Any questions on this layout?
I just have a quick question. I roughly counted about forty-ish classrooms. Does that sound about right?
Yeah, it's about that range.
How does that compare to our current location? How many classrooms do we have currently?
Sorry, I don't have that count. That's a hard, that's a hard one to count for Dixon because there's some unusual spaces. I'll get that for you, Rebecca, though. I don't have that with me. So how did you determine for?
Yeah, do you find comparable with more or less?
So we base it on potential future enrollment, current enrollment and programs. And we take that, and then we calculate that out based on the input received from faculty and from the principal and directors. And the right square footage for the right amount of people for what could be a maximum capacity in the future.
So what is the maximum capacity in the future?
Twelve hundred.
So there's room to grow.
Correct, yeah. Room to grow.
How, how many, what is the lunchroom accommodate?
Right now, we bumped that up to about seven hundred. So.
And I believe the auditorium is fixed.
Six fifty.
Six sixty, six fifty-ish. Yeah, correct, auditorium seating. Yeah. You go to the next slide, Bonnie. This is the second level, as I mentioned. You've got more academic classrooms, business, digital literacy. You've got foods and sewing and art programs up on the second level, faculty space up on that second level. And the media center is also on the second level. So some of these areas, for example, the faculty lounge we talked about today in a meeting, it will look out over the cafeteria area, long term. Bonnie, you go to the next one. Sorry, any other questions about the middle school?
Is that open above the cafeteria? I saw that there was like a cafeteria and balcony with the.
There's one portion that leads out from an upper portion. And it's just another access point where people can get upstairs and downstairs. There's a stairway that leads down to the cafeteria and then upstairs.
Otherwise, it's open there.
Yeah, correct. This is just last week's aerial view of Tivu High School's project. I just wanted you to see the masonry walls. The last time I showed this to you, about a month ago, it was this line here along this north side. And you can start to see all the masonry walls are now taking off in the center of the building. Can you go to the next one, Bonnie? Just another view, looking back to the north. So you can see all these walls taking off now on the interior. And overall, for the overall project, we're about twenty-six percent complete at this point. And again, this academic wing will move into this summer of 2023 is our schedule.
Still on schedule?
Yes. Yeah. The only section that we'll move, that we'll move into first, and we've talked about that before, is between the Thunderdome and where the old wave room used to be, if you can visualize that. That we're shooting for this August. That'll have team rooms, locker rooms. And on the second level, there'll be sewing room, business marketing classrooms, and a robotics lab and classroom. Yes?
You had mentioned that we needed to move all the students off campus for the summer because everything can't hold that way.
Yeah, yeah. Dr. McKee, Dr. Montero both been helping me. And so we've got everything arranged at this point. Summer classes will be held at other locations. We're setting up to help with some facilities at Grand View for a lot of their teams and band to use for the summer. We'll shift over some of the storage pods that we've arranged for some of those programs so that they're available. So it'll help us have June and July, this summer and next summer, just so the contractors can move around freely without any students on campus.
Teachers are okay to come on?
Yeah, teachers and staff. Yeah, they'll be, they'll be fine. Any other questions?
Are we, are we having any problems with getting supply issues or anything right now?
It's a, it's a, it's a daily, weekly balancing act. It's something we work through really all daily. We've worked enough ahead of time at this point. There's nothing right now, there's no category right now that could cause us a problem for completion on the academic wing. But we do get notices weekly from different manufacturers and suppliers nationwide, mostly price increases, depending on what it is. And I shared one with superintendent this past week, or two weeks ago, it was a small one. We were able to work that one out, where everybody split thirds on that one. But that's been the exception. Yes?
How does all that affect our planning and building for Wasatch and Shoreline?
So, that's a good, great question. So Shoreline, our structural engineer on Shoreline has already been working with her construction team to get structural steel ordered as fast as possible so we can get on that waiting list. That's one of the advantages of the CM, the construction management process, is we have the team together earlier so that those entities can work together to get things ordered. And it's really, really helpful right now and still, especially where it's thirteen months out from the day you order. So anyway, that, that's in process. And then we do the same in other major categories.
Did you say when Tivu's supposed to be done?
Yeah, the academic wing, this portion, we will move into summer of twenty-three.
Okay. And what was the original price of Tivu?
The original price was about, and I'm talking construction price, was about seventy-one million on bid day.
So how much is it now?
And right now, we're at about eighty-two. And with soft costs, we're just over ninety million. And so we've seen, with all our battling and negotiations and nonstop discussions, we've experienced about a twelve percent escalation factor for Tivu.
So I saw on the news that China has a new COVID variant and that it's gonna start affecting everything again. How is this gonna affect all three school constructions?
We don't know yet. We, we hope it doesn't.
Because they're all locked down and not working.
Yeah. We hope it, we hope it doesn't. We just don't know. Usually, one of the first places we'll start to see it is soon as we'll start to see a concrete letter about concrete prices. And usually, that's impacted first from China.
Okay.
So Mark, just along with that, what are the products that we're getting from China for products like this?
Concrete is number one, and it's not, it's some of the ingredients, right? Fly ash and things like that. That's probably the biggest one. And there's a lot of other things, and I, I'll have to send you guys a list. I apologize, I don't have it with me. But there's an extensive list of products that we, that come international locations that make a difference on, on American projects. I'll get that for you.
Another question I have, Mark. When you said, was it twenty-six percent completion?
Correct.
Is that, is that only for this particular building here? Or are we talking about the entire Phase One, which included the, the elementary gym?
That, that is for this part of the project right now.
Okay.
Right, I'm not including the south gym.
Okay.
If we threw that in there, right, it would increase a bit. But I'm just talking about the south academic wing, the future softball field and those adjustments.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Can you remind us all the timeline for Wasatch and Shoreline for subcontractors and then starting to actually do the project?
Yeah, thank you. So Shoreline will bid about mid-April. It's coming up quick. I'll be able to share with you guys a, a good bid number by the end of April. And then based on board approval in May, we'll be able to start, start site work on, on that middle school project by the end of May. Completion, projected completion date for the middle school is summer of twenty-four. With Wasatch Elementary, we've needed extra time to coordinate some site placement and site design. That one will most likely bid right now, early June. And we're looking at, at a spring 2024 completion for Wasatch. And we'll do everything we can to get that done earlier. But that's, that's my best estimate right now for Wasatch. Terry, going back to your question too about possible impacts to projects. I mentioned this in a meeting this morning, that just in here in the state, just in the state of Utah, for this coming November, there's two large school districts that are planning bonds. And just those two districts alone, what they'll be requesting will be just under a billion dollars of school construction.
Is that for one school or multiple schools?
Multiple projects, but two school districts. So it's a lot of projects. And it's a huge impact to a state like Utah that's already struggling with labor force and materials and supply lines. It's, it's.
But we'll get to be priority because we're first?
Yeah, so that, that's the point I wanted to make. It was a great decision that was made to move when we moved with Dixon and with Wasatch. If we would have waited for this fall, we would have seen numbers much worse and delays much worse because of what's, what's in the pipeline. Any other questions? Okay, can you go to the next one, Bonnie? Go other direction.
Just scrolling down?
Yeah. Okay. This, some of you may have seen this. I wasn't sure how many saw this. This was released from Division of State Risk last month. But what the state did, they collected data from every public school district in the state of Utah, from Logan to St. George. And they documented every building that has some level of unreinforced masonry. And it's a really detailed, I can't remember how many hundreds of pages it is, but it's got a lot of good detail, district by district, of what buildings are in need of seismic upgrades, replacements, or things like that. Can you go to the next one, Bonnie? One thing I wanted to share with you as a board and with the Provo community. If you look back over the past ten years here in Provo District, some great things have been accomplished. Ten years ago, all of these buildings were in need of significant seismic improvements. And at this point, we have a new Provo High, new Rock Canyon, new Sunset View, new Agumon, new Provost. We're well on our way for a replacement school for Dixon Middle School Community and Wasatch, and, and well on our way with Tivu. In fact, we've eliminated one of the top-tier risks that we had at Tivu by replacing that south gym. If you remember, that's where the structural twisting was taking place. So the reason I share this is due to two reasons. One, I think it's, it's good to look back to see what's been improved. We are in, Provo District is in a much better situation than it was a decade ago. And I mentioned this to the superintendent. If you look at some of those lists for other districts throughout the state, there are some districts with some real challenges ahead. Extensive, extensive lists of, of buildings.
Lots of bonds ahead.
A lot of bonds ahead, yeah.
The list was a highly political document. It was when it was going to be released, they gave a six-month notice because some districts were gonna be in so much trouble.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, there's a lot of work to do. Anyway, I just wanted to show you that when we finish Wasatch and the new middle school, all that we'll be left with are the Grand View buildings and the, and this district office building that will not be up to seismic codes at that point. So you go to the next slide, Bonnie. These are the, the last two things I wanted to share with you. This, this top portion, these top two paragraphs, I wanted to share with you because what they shared in this report is exactly what we did. We were proactive. We knew the steps to take. We knew when to take those steps. We knew the consultants to involve to take the proper steps to start down the road of improvement. And the community, those who were able to support the bonds, the community should be thanked. Previous school boards, this school board. There's been a lot of great improvement here with, with facilities. And then this last paragraph, I just wanted to share this with you. Schools are widely recognized as needing to be amongst society's safest structures. The code that's currently used for new school construction in Utah requires that education buildings with more than two-hundred-and-fifty occupants be designed with twenty-five percent higher seismic forces than a typical commercial or residential structure. You've heard me say this, use this comparison before. With mechanical operations, with air exchange, the only types of facilities that are better than public schools are, are, that require a higher level of hospitals. And they pay for it. I know one of the most recent hospitals here, we, we see yard cost climbing. And one of the newest hospitals here in Utah Valley, about six-hundred-and-seventy dollars a square foot. And if you look at public school districts, we're now in the three-hundred-dollar square foot range. But we have some of the safest buildings around, which makes sense because they're used for more than just school. But especially the kids and the, and the faculty and those that visit, so. Any questions?
So on that, with the design of the twenty-five percent higher, that wouldn't need to be for this building or Grand View? Because we don't have two-hundred-and-fifty occupants.
Correct, yeah, just buildings with students. Yeah, consistent student use, correct.
So for the board to know, going back to the Shoreline Middle School, the, the logo is being reviewed this week. I met with John Anderson this afternoon. So Caleb and Sean put together three options. Those options have gone out to the Dixon students to ask them what their preferences are. And then that recommendation will come to you probably at our next board meeting for formal approval. It stretched out the process a little bit longer than we, than the architects wanted to. But we tried to put a move on this and just to involve the current Dixon middle, middle school students, just to get their feedback and input.
Thank you. Okay, thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Mark. Out-of-state travel, superintendent.
I don't have a written copy right now, but do we have a representative? Do you have a table here right now? I can't get it seen up. Okay, well, this is the, oh, darn, I'm full of. This was, as I mentioned in the write-up that you gave in advance, this was supposed to come forward in February, but the, the activity sponsor, the teacher, was down ill with the popular illness at the time. So Bonnie kind of broke this with me and, and the teacher, and we agreed that we bring it forward here. So this is, I believe, two, I don't have it right. Okay, yeah, in Dallas. They've gone before. I probably could have signed it because they've gone before, but I generally don't like to sign middle school travel without coming to the board. Policy wants the board to look at middle school travel, so. You can see the dates on there and the number of students, explaining how many will go. And again, they've gone before.
If I remember right, this has to have been for agenda twice?
No, no, just once.
Okay.
The school fees do twice.
Okay. Is there any further question on this, this out-of-state travel? Okay. We will be approving that too, is that right?
Yeah.
Is there the agreement? Do you want to talk about that?
Well, it's not ready. So that's why there's nothing in your board docs on it. It's not ready. We, we, we met with the, with the city on Thursday afternoon. Mark was there, Derek Marshall, our attorney, and me, and Brian Jones, attorney there. Wayne Parker and I have been going back and forth for the better part of the week on the elements of this. It took a while to get going on it. It took a while to connect. And now that we're connecting and we need to work, work out some final details, it's not really a matter of disagreement over content. It's a matter of just getting together and finishing the discussion. That's really what's going on. And we couldn't pull it together in the city's meeting today, and they were a little tied up during the meeting. So that's unfortunately.
Should we wait and approve this?
Yeah, we won't be approving it.
I would not expect you to approve something I don't have before you, so.
But we'll postpone that.
Yeah. When I get it, I'll get it to you in advance of the meeting that you can review. And then if you have any questions, please call me because I should know it inside out by that time.
Any further questions on that?
So we removed it from the business agenda.
Next, large purchase request, Derek Anderson. I'm gonna talk about that one.
Yeah, so, excuse me. So the CTE department is requesting a, a large purchase of furniture for the CAPS program. So this will be furnishing the CAPS program. This would come out of their existing budgets. So this, they actually, this is gonna come out of grant money they're, they're receiving. And so that's really kind of what, what the need is for, is for that CAPS program. I believe it's gonna be what we're in use, is what they're gonna be furnishing. So it's a lot of furniture over there, so.
So what, what are they using right now?
Uh, just.
Oh, hey, there you go. That's my question too, because it was furnished by Nuskin. So are they taking that away? Are they revoking that?
They, they are not revoking that furniture. They've been super generous to provide everything that we have. And this furniture will just allow us, one, to have more students in the space than we are able to with the furniture right now. In some of the spaces, the furniture is really bulky and it's hard to really walk around and move around once we get a big group of students in there. So this will allow us to move around and do a little bit more in the space. And it'll be modular, so it'll give us a lot more options. The furniture that we have right now is definitely not movable at all. So that's why we're, we're looking to do this. We're hoping this will help us in better serving our students and help us to increase enrollment because we'll have more space for students.
Great. And Nuskin will be bringing their own?
They are.
Can the furniture be moved if they change locations?
Yes, they can, yes.
Okay, any further questions about this large purchase? All right, we will be voting on that this evening too. All right, bond reinvestment, Derek.
Okay, so what you've got before you here is, we just recently issued our, our bonds for these two new projects. Because the draw for these projects of heavy drawing, where it's like every month, isn't gonna really start occurring probably until December, you know, January. We're recommending that we reinvest that, the funds right now. And what we'll do is put it into different tranches. So you'd have, let's say, twenty million dollars that is locked up for a year. And then another twenty million that's locked up for a year and three months. And then another twenty million, that's a year and six months. And another twenty million is, you know, a year and eight months. So there's different tranches that fall off that become available. But by doing this, it's gonna allow us to get more interest on these funds because right now the PTIF is like hovering between point-three and point-five percent interest. And we are allowed to get up to two-point-four percent interest based off arbitrage rules and what we have in our bond documents. And so by doing this, we'll probably average around two-point-one percent interest, which means over the course of the time period that we have it reinvested, we'll generate probably around two million dollars to two and a half million dollars of interest instead of, you know, three to five hundred grand.
Do you want to explain to the public what PTIF is, Mr. Counselor?
Yeah, PTIF is a public investment treasures fund, which, where they will typically go and reinvest those monies that we park there. And we give them a higher interest than if we just sit them, say, in a Zions bank account where you normally cut checks, okay? So that's what the PTIF is, is. So if we have some funds that we're not meeting immediately right now, there is a way to store that up with a public investments treasure fund to gain a higher percentage interest over just a normal standard sweep checking account. Then there's another level right above that where we actually reinvest it into like, you know, triple-A rated securities, highly rated securities. It's kind of like someone just came and paid for our bonds, right, that are highly rated. We'd be turning around, rebuying bonds or investments that are highly rated that pay a higher interest than either the PTIF or a sweep account.
No risk?
There's very, very little risk. That's why, and it's Allah and Seiko that you can do additional investments, but they have to meet a certain investment criteria grade, which means a highly rated, triple-A, double-A two, things like us, where there's almost virtually no risk of losing money.
And it's lined up with the draw schedule that we need to be able to pay off on the bills, right?
And that's when, and so what I've got here is essentially kind of a summary or attached example. When we sit down, have a better idea of the draw schedule, that's how we map it out.
Okay, so it's just an example of.
Correct, correct.
So what would be the worst-case scenario if we need to have money right away?
So we, if we needed to have money currently right away, we've got the twenty million dollars of, or eighteen and a half million dollars of our.
Capital fund?
Thank you, the reserve, the building reserve fund. We also have capital funds. We also have, I think, sixty million left of our Tivu bonds that are unspent. I mean, there's, there's money in capital for us to handle the expenditures, any of the smaller expenditures that happen between now and the year.
These things that you just mean hasn't been spent yet, right?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, not left over?
Yeah, correct.
We know where it's going, it just hasn't happened yet.
Yeah, okay, right.
This is going to be juggling, right?
Can we really trust these bond ratings after what happened during the recession?
So most of these, and if you look at the schedule, right, most of these things are treasury bonds, right? Or a bank, or, right, they're not, they're not like you're going to go and invest it in just, you know, regular old companies or that are starting up. I mean, you see half of them are treasury bonds, and so they're, they're pretty secure.
Yeah, the ones at the bottom, this is US Treasury. That looks like it had the annual income of $100,000, so.
That's correct. Based off of, so there's different, that's why they have different amounts there, because there's par values. So the par value is the amount that would be invested in each of those individual investment vehicles. And that's the estimated interest they're saying we'd get on an annual basis.
Does interest rate go with that?
And as they continue to go up, it will continue to be in our favor.
What happens, we, we have a cap at 2.4%? That's as much?
Almost 2.5, 2.4487 out to whatever, so it's almost 2.45%.
So what if one, you know, tops out at 3.5 and one tops out at 1.5? Are we allowed to like?
It's the aggregate, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
So you can see like one of them there has got a coupon of 3.2%. The yield of 1.3, so.
It didn't do pi? I mean, it was pi.
And so that's, that's, yeah, I mean, we'll get way more interest, which will then help with the offset of escalation costs, which could help, you know, with project cost, things like that, so.
Now, is there something that we have to vote on tonight, to reinvest it?
Correct. Essentially, the vote would be given, you'd have the way to then turn around and re-vest this.
Is there anyone concerned about that moving forward? I think it's. That would be a neat question.
Nate also knows that Zion's and Derek are constrained by the treasurer. The treasurer has to sign off on every one of these investments. So it's not just Zion's opinion about if they're trustworthy. The state treasurer also has to go through and say, you're allowed. And if it's not to this level, you're not allowed.
Correct. So the, they have what's called the Utah Money Management Act. And in Utah Money Management Act, it has kind of the outlines. And to get on the list of these investments, it goes through exactly that. The treasurer goes through and analyzes and says, okay, these are okay investments.
Probably stating the obvious, but with costs for construction being so volatile, this is a good move to have better and more extra money for camp.
Especially with unknown costs coming forward.
Yeah.
Okay, we will vote on that this evening. All right, next is funding request.
Okay, so the next item we have before you are the budgetary requests we've received for next school year. The items that have been highlighted in blue are the ones that we, as a council, have discussed and we feel warrant approval to move forward and fund those requests. One of them, you know, is Camp Big Springs. The other ones are the teaching and learning positions, not teaching and learning positions, my apologies. It is a.
Learning initiative.
Learning initiative, thank you. For our one-to-one initiative and getting all of our teachers to be highly skilled and using Canvas and those online learning platforms. And then the other ones below, those ones are actually, they're on here because they've been hired this year and aren't in the current year budget, or not, sorry, I mean that, sorry, not in next year's budget, but will be added to there also. So that's why that's on there.
The ones that don't have description?
Correct.
So the, the learning initiative director, for example, was hired. We did not have a replacement for Brett and Kate when we moved into a different position. That is, I've been for about half a year. And so we did hire Suzie Cox to backfill that opening. And then some of the other help that is planned to come that way, a portion of that will come from the digital to general grants that we get from the state. So we're, we're hoping not to be hitting any of the new money that has kind of went from the state as much as possible. We're trying to avoid that. And honestly, that's the big reason why everything else was, I wouldn't say rejected, just, I guess I would say declined. Because we know that it could be a difficult year for people to see us adding a bunch of things that others may regard as wishless. We know that they would help the district to function better. But, you know, we don't want to take our new money and dump it into that. We know that the new money needs to go to teachers' salaries, so.
That was going to be my question plus comment is, and I don't quite still understand which, because it was helpful for you to say this was a position that had been left open. Because sometimes I feel like on the school level with the, trying to get it down to 27.5 per student, which is great on paper, harder in real life. We're asking the schools to go super lean. And it feels to me sometimes, and perhaps I just don't understand it, like we're going super lean on the school level and then we're fattening up on the district level. And I'm not, I've had community members mention that as well. And so if there's a way for us to demonstrate that we're being super lean, because if I had my druthers, I prefer that the money go to the school level. That's where the money, like you just said, the money needs to go there. But I'd like to be able to see that. And I don't know how to, I don't know, I don't know if this is even a discussion right here, for right here and right now. But I would like to see that the money that we're spending, that if we're asking the schools to go super lean, that we are also going super lean. Like, it's not fair for us to do that, nor do I think it's the best use of money.
It's not quite as lean at the school level as you might first think because all we're saying is that we're going to fund schools to a certain point. They still have some discretionary money such as TSSA money and Title I money and other funds that they can backfill some of the positions that they would anticipate losing. And every principal that I've been visiting with, that's their plan. So they're not looking at really draconian cuts. There, I mean, there is the occasional principal who, if they're looking at doing a reduction, it's not coming as easily as maybe for other schools. Some schools have attrition going on, whereas other schools maybe do not have the attrition going on. So it's a little harder work. But Jason and Derek in particular have been very, very passionate to the school principals about the struggles that they're facing on this one. So I think we're fine.
That's, so that's one of the, the kind of messages that has, one, this, we're trying to get back to the target student teacher ratios that we've had as a goal for a long time. We've decoupled from that the last handful of years. And so we're just trying to get back to that. So it's not, we're not saying, hey, we're going even higher, we're just trying to get back to that. And the message has been, it's not like a hard and fast rule that you have to get there this year. If you can't get there this year, we've had, we've been around having conversations and awarded some of those positions back that, to give, to give them time to get there. And also we've met and said, hey, look, you know, based off of programming, if you just can't get there, here's an extra FTE also. So we've, we've been pretty flexible with them. And what we're asking them to get back to is just a standard ratio that is, has been our standard. And is pre-COVID, has been our standard and is still less than some of the neighboring districts.
Okay, okay, thank you for that.
And to further, another question that you brought up is, if we're considering that out of the schools, what are we considering here? That is also a conversation we're having. But the difference is, is attrition happens a lot more at the schools than up at our level, too.
I asked one of my principals to kind of go through that with me, and it does not look good for the school. They're not having attrition problems, they're having the opposite problem. And then they have the DLI question, which is a huge question. And so as long as, as long as, and this is a Title I school, so they get additional funds, but it's still not covering as far as I can tell. I just want to make sure that these students are the ones who are behind already. And we need to make sure that they are covered and that they have appropriate FTEs. And so I, I want to see that.
I, I met with that principal last Thursday morning, and I reviewed with her that, how do I say this? She was assuming we had, she had to go to the max this year. Whereas what we've done is we've said, here's our target for this year, and then here's our target for next year. Next year is still very much up in the air because we could get stronger enrollment back next year. So the issue doesn't remain necessarily as dire as she was originally thinking it was. And I actually got a hug out of that meeting, so she was very relieved.
Okay, thank you.
So looking at this, I mean, my first glance was like, whoa, that's adding a lot of positions. But it looks like it's supporting all the teachers in the district. Could you talk a little bit more in detail about how this is helping our whole district? The technology especially?
Yeah, I, I think the big issue is, we were, we were trying to put ourselves, when we went through this, in the place of you for us. If you were asking us, what are you doing with this, and why? We were trying to say things like, well, you know, not only do we have to defend this to the board, we've also got to defend this to the teachers association and other groups. But in particular, with the amount of money that we have dropped over the last couple of years on Chromebooks, for them to be sitting there unused as they are now this year, we felt that that is not, has not been a wise investment if we're not going to do something about really giving the teachers the skills to put them to work. And so hiring Suzie back into that position and giving her some of the access to the teachers and also to have her manage the digital teaching and learning grant from the state, we think that that's going to help, and she can't do it alone. There was a time that we had three, I don't think there were four. I think there were three people who were running the learning initiative originally. As those people have retired over the years, we've not replaced them. We've just kind of let it have some momentum on its own. But COVID really disrupted that momentum, it changed. So now we've got to get this back so that teachers use it in effective ways. And Suzie's going to be leading that church.
So with constituency questions, if you Google state auditor project kits, then you can find real-time data last year, last school year, on the state average and then any other given LEA average. So the state average of how much percentage of the total budget goes to the classroom, as in this teacher salary and then the teachers support things that touch students, is 64%. Provincial district is 64.3. On administrative costs in the district, in the state, it's 11% goes to administrative costs. Ours are a little higher, 11.6. So that extra 6%, part of that is, so like with the teaching and learning thing, that also, that comes from a grant. That grant has to be administered and written. We don't write the grant, we don't collect the data, show the report, we don't get the money anyway. So it's a lose for all of our students. And so that 11% means districts like us have to compete with districts like Davis and Alpine who do that for 90,000 students, and we do this for 13. And, and so that's, that's part of that challenge. But just knowing, so even when we're close to the average and just, you know, 0.6% above the average, we probably need to justify it. But that keeps, at least we can see where we're at and what we're doing. And you can break it down even further than that. And it's from the auditor, the state auditor's office.
What's the website again, Kay?
It's Project Kids, so Utah State Auditor Project Kids, so.
They have something at USBA, right?
Yeah, this is what we were educated on at USBA. Okay, it's actually really cool.
Anyone finds that, will you send me the link?
I'll do, I'll do that. I'll, I'll send that.
Thank you.
Right now.
That would be great. I meant to get that link in hand to people, but I forgot.
Derek, just to make sure, I've heard that they're also using trust lands money to fund teachers too.
So that, that's part of the buy-up money. So any of the money that they get additional to what we do, they can choose to buy up.
An FTE.
Aids, FTEs, yeah. So, and what's available to them is, we give them an allocation for, for supplies and things like that. They get TSSA, they get trust lands, they get, some of them get Title I. There's a handful of different pots that, this year they got SIR funds. And so they've got a good amount of money where, you know, what was it? One, one school elementary I met with the other day who was concerned about, you know, FTEs. It was a good conversation. I came back, pulled their budgets, and the total money they had available to them that was allocated for them to choose how that split up was about $350,000, which is enough for pre-teen teachers.
Do a lot have carryover from when they wanted to hire aides this year and couldn't find people to hire, that they could then apply the next year's staff?
If it's a state-funded grant, they have carryovers, but they're more limited to the amount of carryover that's allowed in the state, in the state program or state grant.
So trust land is 10%?
Correct. And.
And they don't like that.
Oh, yeah.
You do that two years in a row.
Yeah. And then the amount of carryover that we have from our budgets that we allocate is also, I think, is at 25% or 15%. So they, they have carryover that they can use. The trouble is, is you can't stock it away because the money, the state, and we can look at it as, don't hoard your money and who your money, because the money you're allocated now is for the kids this year.
But with the COVID hardship year.
Kay, with the trust lands, you know, the 10%, are they going to be looking beyond that this year just because of COVID? Like, some people weren't able to spend it due to COVID things or because they couldn't find an aide?
I'm sure that, I mean, they always have reasons to be patient, and you're never, they're just like, don't, don't do that. They're going to talk to you, and we're going to give you additional training, don't do that. Nobody goes to jail, nobody, nobody loses a license, nobody, you know, gets really caught up.
But do they lose that pocket of money that they didn't spend? Because I was just at Dixon's community council, and the same thing happened at Dixon, and they have more than 10% left over. And they're trying to decide if they need to spend it right now or if they can still roll it over, even though it's more than 10%.
So here's.
You have to have, basically, you have to have a plan. Like, what's the plan?
So it will come down to two things, is do you have a plan to spend it? And, and how much is it? If it's a huge amount, okay, they're, they're more likely to say no. But what they do too is they don't look at the individual school level, they look at the district level. So if one, one school is, say, you know, 5% carryover, but the district as a whole is at 50%, they're going to look at the district as a whole and say, yeah, you guys did, you guys did all the rules. So we're going to, we're going to tailor and pull some of this back. And so it's kind of a fine balance. And they, they do offer some leeway, but I have seen them saying, you know, we're pulling back on your allocation because you have too much carryover.
So regarding discretionary money, Derek has communicated with schools that he's going to be permitting them to carry over more money going into this next year than probably ever in the past.
So from our current, current allocations?
Right. So the question about trying to hire instructional aid and we couldn't find anybody to take the job or that kind of thing, that money is, is again negotiated with Derek. But what is it, 50% we're allowing to carry forward?
We were going back and forth between 1%. Did we line up 50? Yeah, it's 50.
So with my question about instructional aid, like, there's 49 positions open for instructional aid right now. And there's a request for $225,000 for instructional aid on this list. And it seems unrealistic to be able to fulfill those if there's 49 positions still open.
And that, we, we didn't end up funding that one based off of all of our discussions. Because of, we felt like if, if what we're bringing forward, we wanted to be very judicious in terms of, while we're at, asking to increase the, the ratio back to what it was, that we'd be very cautious on what we add up here.
But to that point, I'm just, I just want to make sure I understand correctly. A lot of what has been approved, we're hoping we've covered through grants anyways.
Correct.
And will we know how much is going to be covered by that?
The bulk of the blue for, what you see as our learning initiative, those will be covered by. Well, so the bulk of the blue for, we would see as our learning initiative, those will be covered by grants. There's going to be a portion of that that we will have to increase the budget for because it was, there were Chromebooks that were covered out of it previously. And so it's going to be, my guess is around $200,000 that we'll probably have to cover and actually increase to cover the Chromebooks elsewhere. And then the other ones are just, you know, actual increases.
So part of the reason we wanted to bring this forward to you tonight is so that, you know, you're going to see the, the first swing at the budget in May. And then you'll have to approve that, that won't be approved until after treatment taxation.
So you'll have to, you'll have to approve a tentative budget.
In June.
And then what will also happen is the final budget will be the one in August.
Right. So we want, we didn't want you surprised and we wanted to kind of get your feedback on this as well. We've decided that if it's not something that we've spent an awful lot of money on needing support or maybe security or those kinds of things, that's really all we could hope to fund. Even the security position, the risk manager position, that was a position that we, you, you heard me talk about that previously. We had it funded in the past and then we just let it sit there for a while. So we're coming back to doing that just to make sure that we can recover that position. But other than that, we really feel like we can defend this to everyone. Because the, the vast majority of the money is not being taken from their money.
Sorry, one more question on the grant, this portion of it. Are they ongoing or are they one time?
They're ongoing currently. They could be stricken in the future. It's always, but right now they're currently ongoing.
All right, is there any further question about these two questions? Okay. Moving on, uh, FY 2023, school fees, Derek.
Okay, so this is the second approval of school fees for you. Unfortunately, the 211 was not passed in any form. And so.
Was it closed?
Um, it was, it was killed in executive appropriations because they went, they received the message that they just couldn't pass it on to the districts to do this. And so they, they had to come up with a fund, a way to show that it was funded. And they didn't want to prioritize it. And so everyone liked the idea, but they just didn't know how to pay for it. It was, and.
Will you come back in a future year?
Um, easily. I mean, basically, basically it's a, it's a percent and a half on the WPU. And that's from the USBO folks, they're just looking at a cut across. So this year they would just increase the WPU by one and a half to say, okay. But you can see that in ongoing, so that's the increase of the value. But you wouldn't have, that's ongoing money. So it's extra money this, that one year that's sort of telling people how to spend the WPU going forward. But it's, it's finding that year where you can just say, oh, this is, this is this one and a half percent on the WPU that will go for this specific thing.
So because, yeah, exactly, there was no funding that was attached to it and so it was a value.
So like, yeah, they didn't bring it for a vote in the senate even. I mean, they brought it for the second reading calendar, but not for the final vote.
And so because of that, that's, the fees are, as what they're presented and that's the plan. I don't, I haven't heard of any input that's come in between the first and second reading. That one's received, that looks like, so. Any questions on them?
The spin plans have also been updated on the website. We've broken out the full years can be seen. So the English one, I should preface that. I am a word slower in my Spanish than in my English. So the, if the English spin plans are all updated, we'll run it in Spanish. Okay, any further questions about this group? Okay. Moving on, we're going to discuss the redistricting. Audrey, can you pull that up?
I spoke to Norm Thurston and Kurt Bramble and they explained that with the MAPS, if you are currently an elected official, you are using the old MAPS. And if you are running for office, you are using the new MAPS. So it doesn't really take effect until January 1st, 2023, the new MAPS. When whoever's running for office goes into office in January. So we really don't need to discuss this until January.
Probably prior to January.
But that's not what Karen said today.
She, she just meant, so, I mean, they're saying the same thing. So what, so that Kurt now has part of Heber, is he really not going to treat them like his constituents? When he'll have to run, the next time he runs, they don't apply until the you run. And so, but once you run, actually, we all represent, our, our charter and state, in state statutes, we represent the whole district. We vote with the whole districts. And so sort of all of our, we get elected by this group. And so you can see why it doesn't apply until you're, there's an election.
I have an election in my area for two and a, two and three quarter more years.
Right, so this is just affecting the east side right now.
Yeah, that's true. But, I mean, we all, we all represent all of the, the, the school district in one capacity or another. We spend all their money certainly if I vote.
Well, I think we can look anytime at what schools do each of us are assigned to represent in that way? And do we need to make any adjustments?
Sure.
And I think that is something to talk about tonight, whether or not the, whenever the redistricting officially take effect, right?
Yeah. So.
And something I just wanted to throw out there is an option for secondary schools because they all represent those, like all the east side, people all represent Timpew and Centennial. All the left side represent, will represent Dixon, Shoreline and Timp, uh, and Provo.
And Independence.
And, well, Independence is the entire district.
Right.
So is Provo, really? So is Timpew, really?
Right, but what I, what I'm thinking at too though, is it might be good to have that on a rotational basis?
Yeah.
That you have a certain board member on a rotational basis on that.
I, I like, I like that a lot. I mean, you know, we all get questions in our neighborhood about each, each, each school. I mean, about every school in fact. So I, I think, especially when it comes to the secondary schools, I think that we really good not to just go with geograph, they happen to be in the electoral district. I think we'd be good to move that, move those around.
I also think it evens out the amount of schools everybody has.
Yeah.
Because like Terry, you're going to have four elementary schools and that's a lot.
In two years.
In two years.
Two years. All three elementary, one middle school.
And then Gina, where you have just one. I mean, we can balance out our school representation very easily by rotating secondaries.
Except when, when the rotating goes to your district because then you'll have them all. Does that make sense?
Well, not necessarily. So, so yes, I understand what you're saying, but I'm saying we don't have to, we, I mean, we can split up Provo High and Independence and have it be with different, a different board member. We can rotate those through different districts. Does that make sense?
No.
What are, what are you saying? Maybe I don't understand your comment.
She's saying that year that Terry, you give Provo High plus all the ones that are already. No, but I'm saying if we rotate Provo High around and then you're already doing the ones that you represent, you might have a lot that year and Gina might have one if we're on a true rotation.
Right. I understand what you're saying. Okay, I understand what you're saying.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not against it. I think it makes sense. I think it's smart to do. And it won't, whoever has my area, me and whoever has it after me, it's not going to be that big a deal because I'm only going to have one school in, within my, my district boundaries. But for you two, you're going to have, I mean, and that's fine. I mean, if that's, if that's what we decide to do, you guys are going to have, you've got what, four schools now?
I have, well, but two are secondary. So one is Provo High and one is Independence. So if we're just talking elementary, I only have two. You would have one, Terry would have four. Terry would have, Terry has the biggest, three?
Three, right now.
Sorry, you, okay. You would have four, right? So you would have the biggest load as far as elementary schools.
Well, and just one, Nate, Terry goes to one and mine goes to four.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I, I don't think we have to divide it exactly how our, our districts are labeled like.
But that's how we have done it in the past. So that's why I'm trying to bring this up now.
Yeah, which I think is good to have a discussion. So like Nate's, when the changes happen, technically Timpew is no longer in his and it has been, right? And Edgemont too. But really most of his constituents are still attending that school. So we don't have to just have it where the school boundary is. McKay already represents a lot of the Provo Peaks area, but because the school sits in my boundary, it's been assigned to me, but we could say McKay can have that assignment and have two schools right now and.
I used to.
Did you?
Yeah, with Shannon Paulson.
Okay.
I, yeah.
How long has the time been on?
Well, that one, um, you're, the precinct that Provo Peaks is in, that covers three schools. If you guys know the boundaries, so it covers last that Provo Peaks and Provost boundaries.
Oh, and that one, one precinct.
Yeah, the one that goes over to Seven Peaks. That one, there, there's three school boundaries in that one precinct, so.
So Jennifer, you're suggesting not to necessarily go by our voting districts, but just maybe even out the, the elementary schools in general?
Yes, and that's going to sound weird coming from me because I always try really hard to advocate to all the Timpew and Centennial parents and teachers that it's not just the people who live right next to the school that attend that school because living in southeast, like that's our school too. But I honestly don't feel a strong need to have to have either of those schools in my rotation because I feel like we're doing a good, at least the ones that I'm affected by, I feel like we're doing a good job of whoever's available goes to the PTA meeting. I'm okay with somebody else looking at their school community council land trust plans. But I feel like pre-COVID, we were all meeting with the Centennial principal on a regular basis so that all the board members involved stayed up to date. So I think if we can do things like that, I don't know that we need to formally rotate like, because it's a school, those secondary schools are for all of us to be involved in it.
And I agree, except I feel like there needs to be like a point person who's actually in charge. Because when you, when there's no one that's officially in charge, then nobody knows what to do and then.
No, I still think there should be a point person. I don't think it necessarily needs to rotate if we can do a good job.
So you're just saying, yours, instead of an official rotation, it, maybe it's something we discuss on a regular basis, annually or biannually or whatever. Maybe when we make committee assignments, discuss school assignments and place them where we feel like they need to go? Is that what you mean? Instead of a formal rotation?
Right, or we just decide what it is going to be for the next while and stay with it till anybody object.
I think, I think it's good to have a formal rotation, but also be conscious that everybody gets to go to every school. And if you can go on a P, a website and go, oh, you're having a PTA meeting. I'm welcome there. I get to go. You're having a community council meeting. There's a reason those meetings have to be noticed on the website and in public. And if you're a board member, yeah, you get to go and you get to wear your tag. Say you're a board member. And we don't get to vote. But people are, I mean, you change a meeting. Anytime you show up as a board member, you show up at any meeting in the district, you change that meeting. And so knowing that you're, you're welcome is good and, but also having a.
Welcome, but also it's also.
Yeah, having a formal thing.
I would like to come, I'd like to come, just give the, give them a heads up.
Yep. Uh, giving the, yeah, and that's, that's respectful because you're going to change their meeting. People are going to ask you a question and expect you to give them a pronouncement or have power to.
But you also have to remember too, if you go to those meetings, you may not be called on to speak.
That's right.
Because that's not our meeting.
So, yeah, everybody asks, asks, you know, it's my standard thing. They'll say, oh, McKay, you're here. Do you want some time? And I'm like, I'm here to answer any questions, but I didn't want to disrupt your meeting. And I'm right over here.
So given that board members are not voting the members of any school community council meetings, when would be the right time to organize this? Terry mentioned earlier, you know, as new people come onto the board possibly, that that wouldn't happen until January. Should this be part of our January meetings to, to distribute these assignments or to talk about them?
At least before we know, we have to turn in our trust lands stuff and you have to sign it.
It makes sense to me when we're doing committee assignments to do, to go just every year.
School assignments as well and decide if we want to make changes.
Does that work for trust lines?
Yeah, however you make the assignments doesn't really impact the community councils because they still have to go through the processes. But to Terry's point, Rebecca's point, it's just they're involved enough to know kind of what the conversations.
Yeah. And so there's two things. Because trust land money has gone up that they can fund an FTE. Once you fund an FTE from a school, the chance of you changing back is really slim. Like, oh, I'm going to fund this FTE this year and now I'm going to buy, you know, more PE equipment. No, they, they're going to fund that, that FTE the next year. And so the trust lines start becoming, this is what we do. I, I mean, you go, our, our priorities are, especially in the, in the elementary schools, our priorities are literacy and numeracy. How do we improve this? How will we prove this next year? How do we prove this next year? We do this with people. If we can afford a person, then they do a person almost every year. And they're beginning to be a little repeated. So.
If you're willing to, to look away from the physical address of the actual school building, I would just bring up that from student services perspective, we have two or three additional schools that haven't even brought up that also have to do trust lands programs and have regular meetings too. You've got the Slate Canyon facility, you've got the Oak Ridge or Oak Springs, excuse me, Oak Springs facility. And I also have East School that work on these same things. It's easy for you to get to 21, which would be, again, create some sort of rotation around three locations or school programs that could be as part of some moving forward, you know, way to, to say this balances with some rotation in there if you're willing to let go of the actual physical address of where that lies in there.
I just want to clarify Slate Canyon and Oak Springs don't do a trust land plan.
Right, but they do a lot of other types of things.
They do a lot of other things, so just keep that in mind. But the school community council for the East School does. And so just, just keep that in mind.
Does East Bay Post High do?
East Bay Post High is, is part of the independence program at this point, as well as adult education. So when you're over independence, know that there are those extra things that you got, you got adult education, you've got summer, excuse me, and East Bay Post High, you've got adult ESL classes. There's a lot of things that you just don't know are behind the scenes with independents that would be helpful for you guys to be aware of and support and be advocates for.
Um, I get one way, it makes sense to talk about it every January. But in another way, I think it makes sense to talk about this beginning of every school year. What we're going to be working with that year instead of changing in the middle of school year. That we would make a change, you know, before our July break that would take effect July 1st or whatever.
Right, that would probably be sometime in June that we'd want to talk about it then. If that's how we want. I was, I was kind of wrestling with the same question, is when is the better time to do it? When you've got new people coming on the board, clearly in January. When you are trying to have more continuity throughout the year, clearly in advance of August.
Well, a new board member can always take the role of what was already happening in that board position, yeah. But if I were to change schools, I would rather do it at the beginning of the school year than in the middle of the year.
Conversation throughout the whole year.
So should we put this back on the agenda in June?
Do you want to update or do you thought? Do we want to change that now or do we want, I mean, if like Terry said, we don't technically go into effect until January?
Or it just depends on if we want it in the middle of the school year or not. I feel, sit on it, talk about it again in June, if always.
Well, you could try it one way per year and pretty valuable.
I think that's something to keep in mind. Even if we do make a change at the school year change, at the new school year, and then we have new board members come on, they can have a voice in that, in whether or not that works for them for the upcoming year. Because speaking from experience, you come on and you don't know what the heck you're doing. And so, and I'll give them some time to kind of.
I felt like I was hurried and scrambling before March and finding paperwork. I've got, I've got to hurry, figure out what they're doing.
Yeah.
So I, I would, I would, I would lean toward at the, at the school year, just personally. And then as long as we have an opportunity for, if there's any new board, oh, we will have at least one new board member. that they have some input at the end of that, that school year, if that makes sense. But I do think that perhaps evening out, some, evening out probably isn't the right term, but there are people with.
Balancing.
Yeah, balancing at elementary schools a little bit, and that's beneficial not just for board members, but I think for schools. Like, if you can have a board member that's not going for, you know, meetings, then I think that's beneficial for the school to have the attention of, of a specific board member. And then we have three secondary, I know that Independence is on for everybody, but if we have, if we just want on the west, that would be, we would each rotate one secondary school for each of the west side. Board members, you know, then we just have a different one every year over two years, whatever the size is.
All right, so I will put this on the agenda for June. And then we, I appreciate everybody's thoughts on that, so. Okay. Um, next part is. The March 22nd, uh, study session, so I'm going to just throw this out there. Couple of things, um, with March 22nd of the week from now. So there's a couple of ideas that I have. One is that we move it to the 29th, which would give us two weeks so that we could plan a better schedule and not feel like the rush to do this within a week time. Or because I want to be cognizant of everybody's time here, we can postpone it till the April 19th meeting.
Just cancel our second March.
Cancel that one, yes, cancel our second one because we also have a meeting tomorrow night for USBA and we also have NSBA coming up at the end of the month, which is four full days. So I'm just throwing this out there, we can still hold a meeting. I want your opinion on this before we go forward.
Do we have anything pressing that we should be talking about?
The only thing would, would be the city agreement now. Because that didn't, we don't know when, but that's the other thing, we don't know even in two weeks if we'll have it ready in two weeks. I had thought we were gonna be discussing board goals and changing committee assignments. That's another thing that needs to come up too, is the committee assignments.
So the question is, can we postpone that until April, I guess? Sorry.
And we only have one meeting in April because the spring break thinks everything should.
So we're either slated for a really heavy April meeting or.
Sort of one year.
I'll be awake.
It will set us up for a heavy April meeting.
It would be a heavy April meeting. I do worry about doing it on the 22nd though, I would prefer to move it to the 29th if needed, just to give us some time in between there so that we have a good chance to discuss really what needs to go on. If it's next week, I don't see the city being back for sure, probably within that timeframe. I don't know.
And just to state the obvious, I mean, if we're gonna get together to do a study session, we could tackle this meeting on the end of that if we, if we were getting together.
To the city.
For the 29th, because that was.
Possibly, yeah, they would give us that option, we'd stick to it if the document is done.
When I've been reading the minutes of the other school board, they do their board training on the second study session, or it's just a study session and that's when they typically do their training. But if you want to add that change, then these meetings, these first meetings of the month aren't so long, yeah.
I just wanted to get going on it, yeah, so that's why I threw that one.
No.
But that's a great idea to, to add to the morning study session.
That was their idea, and then I thought it was a good idea, so we should steal their idea.
Yeah. Uh, kind of on off the subject, I will probably have to zoom in for the morning meetings for the foreseeable future of that. I mean.
Unless we want to switch the time.
For location.
What we.
Want to do it in my nine nursery? With the screaming baby ass.
We're adapting the policy that says we can have.
But that's just, I mean, I.
I think we've always done the early morning one, it's so that other people can get to work by 9:00 AM. By really, other minutes, no one else in the city does this.
Does it do a evening meeting?
What do they do Tuesday evening?
They all do five, I mean, I'll find it's four o'clock, but most, everybody starts from at five or six o'clock.
Most of their meetings, I mean, that's when their public meetings with their committees, they meet most of that day.
Yeah.
So they start most of that day.
But if you're living in like.
So.
Because John, you really don't want to be there seven o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, so the rural, the rural folks do not get together.
Five AM to be on time.
I've, I've said before that I would rule, I mean, those morning meetings are hard for me too. I, you guys know, I leave every last one of them early because I've got to get to work before then. I don't have, I don't have flexibility in the mornings. I cannot let the preschoolers be there without a teacher.
They can run into them though.
It's not really a good idea. So I'm fine with changing the time of the morning meetings. I mean, I'll say it, but I will regret it, but earlier is the option.
I think you could, I mean, if during the day or the afternoon, I mean, it's depending on the makeup of the group.
Yeah.
Where that is, uh, I think you have to make some consideration that, that during the study session in the morning, we're in all these people's workday.
Yeah.
And so we have to make some conscious things, like, you know what? We're not gonna do a construction update in the morning. We'll do that once a month. We'll do some of these other things and, you know.
I've gotten that from teachers, like, I can't watch it because.
Yeah. So, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't want these folks on, you know, that listen intently to come to an extra, you know, five, to stay, to stay, you know, five o'clock. Otherwise, I think, but if we just are conscious of that, I think we could do, I mean, we could do board training, we could do lots of things, so.
I'm not sure what you just said, are you pro morning or anti morning?
You just, we just need to be conscious of, of excusing, we'd, we'd need to excuse particular people and not have the expectation that everyone would be here all.
If we did another evening meeting?
If we started doing it in the morning.
Yeah, if we did another evening meeting or an afternoon, it would go past four.
Take you away from your family.
And one thing that's nice about the morning meeting is we are usually done by night.
Yeah.
And that's usually what's that.
Yep. And the people that are arranging their work schedule is us, whereas people are arranging their home schedule in the evening or afternoon, and everybody else is.
Well, I think that's something to consider, and we can bring it up another meeting to decide what time. I mean, you've got, you've got to be a board decision for.
Well, if you want people to come.
I think if we were gonna be changing permanently the time of, of the second meeting a month, that will definitely have to be a board decision and then Bonnie's got to get that onto the, of the notice websites and on and on and on. Because it is a change from the calendar that was submitted at the beginning of the year.
Yeah.
But just so that anything can be done, it just depends on the works.
Gina, you were just asking if it's possible for you to participate remotely initially, right? Just whether that's on the phone or through Zoom.
Yeah, yes. And it's also, I know it's been a question that.
Well, now that we've got the policy in place, that shouldn't be a problem.
After today, it would be set. But I, I know it has been a question about whether we should hold it in the morning or the evening.
I mean, it's easier for me in the evening, but it's a toss-up regardless. In the morning, I'm missing preschool, in the afternoon, I'm missing baseball games, so.
I'm, I'm, I can do, I, we'll make it work, but I, evenings are usually with me, but that's just me. We don't need to consider it.
Yeah.
Well, I suggest that we do have a study session this month on March 29th. And then if we need to add that business meeting onto it, we can do that. And then it sounds like we do have some other things to discuss, and I'd rather do that.
Yeah, when?
On a meeting instead of making April super, super long. And our meeting starts to get really full with other things too.
When's our meeting with the city council? March, April. Oh, no, it's not till April, okay.
Well, it got canceled and then rescheduled, right?
Yeah.
I was just wondering if the 29th would. It's April 26th, it's not. Then never mind, it's not in March, so. Yeah, it was supposed to be in March. Okay. But they couldn't, we had to move it, so. Yeah, so that's not for a while. So then if we have it on the 29th, it won't be complicated. So is everybody okay if we move, have a morning meeting on the 29th then?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we'll plan on that, and Bonnie will get that updated for us. Thank you. Okay, any other questions about study session stuff? And I will put on a future agenda to discuss time again. Okay, board training, um, I like Terry's idea of, of doing this probably in the morning study sessions in the future. Not my idea. Well, we stole the idea. Someone else.
Yeah, I feel like Terry stole an idea, so.
Which is a good idea. It's okay, we can always, I was a teacher, borrowing is always great, so. Anyway, what I would like to do is at least on a monthly basis, go over parts of the board handbook. We're not gonna do the entire handbook every time, but just parts, and I'll probably just pick like three parts. And then what I will do is give reasons of why we do it that way and then have it open to discussion if you have questions about that. I wish we would have been doing this my whole four years because it would have been helpful for me to know like all the, the different rules and to see it on a more regular basis, so. The first part, I don't know if you guys have your, your handbook, but.
It's linked.
It's, it's linked in there electronically, but I wanted to go over the first, under responsibilities, I wanted to go over the first three bullet points. One page. Uh, on the very first page, so page five.
Legal status responsibility and more.
Yeah, so under responsibilities, there's the first bullet point that starts with keep confidential. So the first one says, keep confidential all issues discussed in executive sessions, including legal actions, negotiations, personnel, real estate, and school security details. And then everybody should have this handbook as well, the open meeting law. I just wanted to cover, um, on pages 15 and 16, uh, it talked about, you know, penalties for violating open meeting laws. And it says, a board member who knowingly or intentionally violates any of the closed meeting requirements of the open meeting law, or who knowingly or intentionally evades, or assists, or encourages, or advises the violation of the closed meeting requirement can be found of, found guilty of a class D in this meeting. So, but more importantly, why is it that we need to keep these things confidential? You know, we can meet for the certain reasons, for real estate, uh, negotiations, uh, school security, personnel. Why, why do we have to keep those things confidential? I mean, we could do damage to a real estate transaction, right? If the board got out, so, hey, we were looking at a piece of property somewhere. That could be, uh, cause problems. Um, we could also have problems with negotiations if the board got out that we're, you know, not working well with PEA, or, you know, we're gonna do something different. It could hurt somebody's reputation if we were talking about something like that. Do you guys have any other thoughts on keeping things confidential?
It lets you change your mind.
Yeah.
I mean, if nobody, if any of you want a great book, you should read Adam Grant's book on.
Think Again?
Yeah, Think Again is a great book. On, because on how important it actually is to change your minds with new information and how it's becoming harder because information is persistent, we take public positions and we get, we just get locked in, we, we sort of defend that pass and, and that, uh, that's just a bad thing. And it, if, if we want to be able to work with each other and have the hope that our first instincts are what we thought people were gonna vote for and this is what they are, then this is one of the best strategies is to go, well, I'm helping you change your mind because I'm not gonna bring up what we talked about a little bit and I'm giving you space. It's just respectful of everyone. And, you know, even if votes have been regularly gone your way, I, I can go, you know what? Next time I'm gonna get them because they haven't said, they're not gonna, they have the ability to get the change.
There are certain aspects of school security that we wouldn't necessarily want to have on the public. Pro has not had the, the bad luck of having a lot of really aggressive people who come in armed in those kinds of things into our schools, but those who have them in other places. And so the idea of talking about school security issues when we need to and keeping those things very quiet, it's just a wise, prudent, and safe move.
Okay, any, any other thoughts or comments about confidentiality? All right, number two, avoid conflicts of interest or the seeking of inappropriate advantage as a result of serving on the board. So why is this important? I was got thinking about this and remember, we're each one of seven. We shouldn't give it the impression that as a one board member, we have the authority to do anything, because we don't. And we can't make decisions or take action on behalf of the board, of this old person. We should, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, that's kind of an answer I give my kids and they're like, well, you're on the board, you could do this, you know, at my school, and I'm like, no, I can't.
I have the same thought. You have to be careful, it's the exact same thing as a parent of students in the district. You can't throw around your board card just because.
Yeah, and then another thing I thought about is that we shouldn't use our positions to promote personal financial interests or financial interests of family members. Like, we shouldn't be saying like, hey, I know somebody that could do that.
It's a great 15 pieces, 50 acres, I'm gonna build a school.
Yeah.
Including this one, oh, yeah.
So, um, board members should not solicit or accept anything of value in return for taking a particular condition. That's something. That, I questioned that at Christmas time when I got a present from Franklin Elementary School and I was like, I know the state legislators are told specifically how much they're allowed to accept, but.
We have an, an amount too.
I don't remember seeing what the price tag is.
Fifty bucks.
Fifty dollars.
And people know that because like I got something from someone and I felt guilty eating the chips. They're gonna send me to jail, honey. Perry can raise kids on her own.
That probably didn't cost them fifty bucks.
Yeah, so, so fifty dollars was, it's supposed to be sort of identifiable, um, you know, so, you know, oddly, it was around a jazz ticket price, anyway, this might have cost fifty dollars.
Well, my gifts are usually chocolate, because I will totally eat that. But it's how many pieces of chocolates?
If, if we put a general obligation bond on a ballot, you'll see how much chocolate is dispensed by Zion Bank. They're just sort of known, known for it. And, but even, you know, I have, I have a lot of people that say, hey, I want to meet with you. And I say, hey, I, I've got some time, lunchtime, and I sort of make a point every time that, no, let me get that. I just don't, I mean, if I'm gonna meet somebody at lunch, I, I sort of, and that's not a requirement, it's just helps me know that, uh, I didn't get you here, so you could buy lunch. Because people do take notice of it, so.
Yeah. And the other one I just thought about, you know, making sure that you, um, you're looking at the whole, so that you can have a fair presentation of all types of the questions. A question that I came up with, I was thinking about this too, would it be appropriate to abstain from voting if you feel like it's a conflict of interest?
Absolutely, I think so.
I mean, I've never seen it happen in the board, but I was just curious. Have you ever seen it?
I have seen it, but I haven't seen it in Provo. We generally have not brought a lot of things forward that. We generally have not brought a lot of things forward that generate that kind of. Maybe it's because of the clientele that's on the board. We don't have a lot of big business owners. I mean, if we had somebody who owned, for example, a mall.
Or in rural district agricultural land, you know, it's not uncommon for a board member to come. Yeah, that is my approach, Bonnie, I'm sorry, I don't know.
And that is harder to accomplish in a smaller district. Because you've only got five board members.
I work with this in a, in a city council setting, and we worked through the city attorney to identify that in the case I was dealing with, it was appropriate for the person to disclose their conflict and still able to vote. So I think if you get in that spot, feel the referred legal counsel, identify the nature of the conflict. Is whether a full, open disclosure of the conflict, or a need to recuse yourself from voting would be appropriate.
We could, Bonnie, if you wouldn't mind making me know of this, maybe when we do some revisions to the board handbook, we can get some legal guidance on the right language to put in there for some, some good guidance on it.
And put fifty dollars. Is that not a tip?
No.
No.
Fifty dollars is generally the minimum amount.
Any other thoughts about conflict of interest? And bullet three says refrain from promoting an individual agenda, rather study issues and make decisions that are in the best interest of the district as a whole. So I don't think that this means we have to have a seven oh vote for everything. It shouldn't be that way. But we do need to understand that we might be voted in by our constituents in a certain area, but we do represent the entire district. And all our votes, everything we do affects the entire district, not just your area. So thoughts?
I would, I would just maybe even add to that, supporting everything throughout the entire district too. I know my assignments are specifically, you know, Westridge and Lakeview and Provo High, but I can still go to events and other things, I can still show my support for the entire district. I'm not limited to just those, those areas.
I think that's, that can be a tough balance. Because the reason we have, well, I'm assuming the reason we have board members from different areas of the city is because you live there and you see the specific needs that your area of the city has. And so I think it just takes some, it's going to take some balancing. And I think there's appropriate times for you to advocate for your specific district. And I think there's some times for you to, to go with the district as a whole, but it's a judgment call.
And I think that's why I would say they're not always going to be a seven oh vote.
And I think often it will align. We all have different viewpoints from where we live and the way our smaller areas are affected by it. But often looking at the district as a whole and our own area, we can come to some kind of conclusion that will be good, that everybody can agree with. But there will be times where maybe it doesn't.
And pointing out equity issues, that actually, I mean, if there's an inequity, that is not good. For that's actually the whole district. But certainly that if we find out that there's an inequity in one place, you're advocating to correct this inequity around this school. I think that there's, you know, comfort in doing that. When I was first appointed, I had a state legislator tell me that if people didn't hate you on your board and hate your district, you weren't going to be good.
You mean like other board members then?
Yeah, that you were supposed to just get, you couldn't for your elementary school. That's what he told me. And I went, I don't think that's correct. I don't think that's a good way to do that is, is to, you know, if, he says, if the neighborhood can't see a clear winner for wasatch every time, you're just not doing the job. And I was like, I really, I'm not going to serve that way. And it, I mean, and that, that, that can, that can be hard. It was hard to leave wasatch off at 2014, Bonnie.
So it's not that you don't do that, it's that you have to think bigger than that, right?
Yeah.
We're not just thinking about our own little boundaries.
That's right.
Well, I think you've come to a.
Well, we are, we are thinking about it in the grand scheme.
We are thinking about it, and people will ask you a question, and you get to, it goes back to that, you're one of seven. I think that's like one of the reasons that, that by the time, you know, our latest new board members came on the board, that those assignments became so squishy is because I think even previous boards, even previous to Melanie and Jennifer, and even Rebecca a little bit, was that there was so much effort to go, you know what? We're actually just one of seven, so I can go, but I can't do anything in this meeting, by the way. And so when you say who's a point person, there was a big emphasis to go, nobody on a board is actually a point. The board is a point person, but no single person on the board is a point person, ever. And so we've had a lot more issues sort of around physical locations, like access to the track. And so, yeah, Nate, you're their neighbor, it's a more, you know, the people who want to use the track at, at Tim View. The people were asking were, you know, Nate's neighbors, or, okay, those sort of issues. But those aren't always the issues that come, that came up, and that wasn't sort of. And so those community councils, things were more evenly distributed in the past, and that was the thing. And, and then just who was assigned became, it wasn't as particular. And then it got squishy, and then, well, what does this mean when there's an assignment? And it seems like there are people listed that, what are those responsibilities? And it just got all, it got a little bit squishy because there was a different emphasis for a long time that we're, you know, when we were pursuing general obligation bonds in 2014, we're just, we're a board. We want to do this together, this is all together. And, and, and so I think making some changes from that is healthy. Because we have, we just have different emphasises. But also keeping some of that, that interest, you know. I'm, you know, not in leadership of USBA, I should probably go back to Lakeview Elementary. I should probably go back to Sunset View Elementary. I miss actually, I haven't been there in two years. I miss that advocating for them. Because it changed my advocacy. I mean, when I go to a pause meeting, I see 30 moms there, and I go to, and I went to a Sunset View community council meeting and saw one parent, and all the rest were faculty members and staff members and me. That made a big impression on me about what the needs of that school were different. And their volunteer hours and how things work. So just having that perspective, I think, take some individual responsibility that the bullet point implies that, yeah, you know, we're elected by this group, but having that larger, we do spend all those people's money collectively, all together. And identifying equity, yep, we should advocate. But that involves, you know, going to Oak Ridge, you know, finding out about, you know, about what happens at the state hospital.
These alternative locations.
And these other little things so that we don't have a blind spot.
Any other thoughts? Okay, that was my March fourth training.
That was helpful.
Good. We'll continue doing that, so. All right. Event calendar, are there any questions about the consent calendar?
I do. On the executive summary. On the bottom, pages of four and five, bottom of four and then page five. It looks like things are cleared up because for a long time it was only listed the parking lot.
That's a little point, right?
At the bottom. Yeah, this is way more understandable and explains things better. You know, for a couple months, it just listed the parking lot, money at the view. So I think this clarifies things better for the public. So thank you. And then on the warrant report on page one. Oh, one where it was about HIPAA. Did you figure out if it's supposed to be HIPAA? I don't see, it says page one, but I don't see it.
Oh, it's the very first page, it says HIPAA prohibits names being listed on payroll reports.
Yeah.
As names can only be associated.
Did you find out if it's HIPAA or?
Payroll involves benefits and insurance.
Correct, so the payroll report, that's why I say it is, is we can't give a full payroll report because it includes benefits and insurance. So it's only being associated with the name with the gross pay because we can't list the other things because it is a HIPAA.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was clarified from my last time. And then on page two, it says the skills development program is under the Department of Health. Which department of health, county, state?
The, the state department of health, I believe, is where the invoices come from.
Okay, because it just says Department of Health. And it didn't say whether it's the state of Utah or Utah County.
So there's two of those.
Yeah. Yeah, the one is 62,000, the other one's 54,000, so I don't know.
Uh, Utah County Department of Health, sorry.
Both of them?
Yep.
Those are nursing invoices?
Yep.
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, I thought the nursing invoices were.
Nursing is one of them, but skills is the other one.
I thought nursing was Utah County auditor payment.
Oh, yeah, that's school nurses.
You're looking at the invoices and I'm looking at the warrants, I'm sorry.
So, so the one of them, the Utah County one of them is, is for nursing. The other one?
Yeah, that's the skill.
There's two that just say skills development.
I did not, sorry.
It's the match money for Medicaid.
That's the other one.
The skills, and that's the state department of health.
That one's the state.
Okay.
I thought I saw one of them that said state.
So are you asking them to delineate state versus county?
Yeah, so when you write this the next time, make sure you write down whether it's from the state or this money is going to the State Department of Health or to Utah County. That will be helpful. And then on page four of the warrant report. Is this the first payment to Curtis Minor Architecture about Shoreline?
That, I have to go back, it's, that's something that I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
Two hundred thousand dollars.
Architectures are not cheap.
Architectures are very expensive.
That was a lot of money.
They have a lot of people.
I assume this was the very first payment because it was a huge number, but.
No, this is one of multiple pay requests since we started the process.
Is this just for Shoreline?
Correct.
Okay. And then also on page four, so what did we buy at Ken Garf, Nissan.
They already have the driver's type vehicles.
Oh.
Which, oh, I don't know.
One for each.
Oh, okay. They, they, I.
They're Corvettes. Not Corvettes either, just.
He wants them, he's good at parallel parking, you gotta put some, you know. Gotta raise the stakes.
When our sixth driver said, the teacher was sitting in the passenger seat and he had his own brakes.
They still put that.
Okay, good, because I didn't have that happen to me, but someone I was sitting in the car with, they did not know how to drive very well. They were a new driver. Okay, those are all my questions.
Okay, any other further questions on the financial report? We will be putting up tonight. Okay, upcoming calendar items, just like tomorrow night, USBA is at Magleby's in Linden. Okay. And then study session, we will move that to March 29th.
Can I ask a question real quick? How long are the, will that six o'clock one be after the rule?
Usually about six to eight. You can leave when you leave today.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Who's doing ours? Are you doing ours, okay?
No, I'm not on the board here.
Are you doing it? I get to welcome everybody and then Linda will be there from USBA leadership.
Great. And then NSBA conference is April 1st to the 4th.
Can I ask, are we all going to that?
I think everybody is, is everybody going, Bonnie?
Um, Nate is not going.
And.
And I had to change my flight, which I did.
Uh, foundation basket auction.
Oh, yes, that reminds me, I haven't sent out an email, but since we're almost all of us are here. Just a reminder that we each traditionally give about fifty dollar, some kind of gift card. And we put together a board basket. Bonnie, would we be able to bring that to you and then once they're all in?
I haven't yet, but whatever used to happen, I will talk about it.
All we do is we turn in our gift cards and then we'll take it over to student services and they put it together in a basket.
Sometimes they distribute them through different baskets, sometimes they put it together in a board basket, just to kind of.
And again, this is voluntary, we don't need to do it, but we've done it in the past.
No, that's fine, I just want to make sure I understand. So traditionally, each board member gets a fifty dollar gift card to wherever they would like and gives it to Bonnie to go put toward the foundation.
And that will go to the auction.
Okay.
And then be prepared to go to the auction and spend a lot of money on baskets.
To buy back our gift card that we gave.
That's right.
All in the name of after school programs.
And you can, you can get the gift card donated, like you can ask them, you don't have to pay for it yourself.
Wait, I'm, I'm fine with it, I just, I just wanted to make sure.
Take a strange child, notoriously more expensive.
Yeah, don't take your kids, exactly.
What, when does that, when does that do?
Right before spring break, so March 31st, April 1st.
So if you bring it to the March 29th.
Oh, yeah, that'd be great.
Study session, well, you won't be there, but bring it before.
I'll send it with Terry.
Send it with Terry, yeah. To give to, to give to Bonnie. Okay. Battle of the Books, is this something, I'm not sure about this one. Do we go, do we tend this one? I mean, in half.
It's fun, it's fun.
They asked me to put it on the board calendars so you'd be aware.
Great, Battle of the Book.
When is that?
April 21st, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Provo High School.
Did the, the Provo Reads event get canceled, the author con?
It got moved to September.
Okay, so, because I saw the 17th, because that's, that's.
Out of precaution for COVID, they've moved.
That's what I thought, okay, but it's on here, we just, but it's not, okay, that's what I thought.
And then it looks like we're doing a golden apple dinner. I know at one point that the PTA was asking whether or not to do a dinner or not.
Is that gone?
Last I heard, it was going to be more like last year.
The dry food?
More like a meat tree kind of thing. Yeah, so I don't think it's a dinner dinner.
So we're just going to show up and wave to people as they come by?
As soon as we get details, we'll get it out to you, neither with Ashley nor Terry.
Okay. Then we have our joint board council, city council meeting on April 26th at noon. It's going to be here, we'll have lunch, and it will be in the PVC. If you have things that you would like to discuss, send them my way and we can get that on the agenda to discuss with them. I do have.
Didn't we say something?
Yeah, truth and taxation, and then also possible ability of tennis courts on the.
That's what we were talking about this morning, tennis courts.
Are we talking Surtama?
Surtama, or. Anyway, just to let them know that there's, we were getting asked questions about it, so. And then we'll have our, I think we're missing a study, oh, I skipped over that, study session April 19th, so. And then graduation date and so forth coming up. Remember, Tim View got changed to Saturdays at 21st, so. And for your questions about the calendar?
I just can't handle not being, being second, huh? That was a joke, everybody.
Not funny, Rebecca.
I can't help myself, I'm sorry.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn the study session?
I move we adjourn the study session.
Okay, we are adjourned, we have 10 minutes to take a break and make it into our next meeting.
Thanks, everyone.